I looked at it.
All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order at six thirty-three. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
A roll call, we'll start with Rebecca.
Rebecca Johnson.
Randy Kelly's here.
Carol Locke.
Jason Henry.
Matt Jizokas.
Jay Fitzpatrick.
Eunice Landry.
Pam McLeod.
Tim Broderick.
Heidi Doofert.
Lila Edkins.
Kara Hurtonoff.
Eliza Drilly.
Anne Pierce.
Thank you. Public input. I'm going to read our policy on public input before we start. This is a public meeting under New Hampshire RSA ninety-one A, consistent with the requirement of the state constitution, part one, article eight. Public business is to be conducted transparently with access afforded to the public. This is a business meeting being held in public, however, it is not a meeting with the public. Public comments are welcome to the extent that they may help inform the board regarding decisions about items on the agenda. Personal attacks and/or complaints about individual employees are not appropriate in this forum. Board policy requires that we refer complaints about employees to the superintendent, who will make himself available to the public at his office during business hours. If a complaint involves the superintendent, then it may be made to the board chair in person or via email. And I just want to add that Tim is very accessible to public comments in our experience. Per state law, up to thirty minutes are available for public comment during each meeting. However, public comment is limited to three minutes per individual during each public comment item on the agenda. And I may remind you when your time has expired. So we have comment at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. So we do really welcome comments. We want them to be respectful and please reach out to Tim or I if you'd like to address something directly to us by email. With that, I will open public input. Thank you, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Eric Bordeaux and I'm the boys varsity soccer coach here at Prosser Mountain. I'm here to address certain concerns brought to the board by a parent about the soccer program and myself as a coach. My goal here tonight is to answer his questions so we can move on and build the program rather than try and cause a divide within the team. I also want to add, none of these concerns were brought to me as a coach and were instead brought straight to the school board. I don't have enough time to address all his concerns in great detail, so I've emailed the board a more detailed version of my responses. I had a long speech prepared that covered every issue he brought up. I then realized no matter what I said here tonight, he would probably be back next month with more complaints. I'm glad to see guidelines for public input are on the agenda here tonight. I just wanted to make the board aware, every single complaint he has brought up has been a personal opinion. And after listening to him talk about the hiring process for this position, you could probably take a guess why he's here complaining. One of his complaints was about senior night. I enjoyed senior night and the parents who actually talked to me, what they want to see at senior night were happy. So I don't really understand where his comment that we have a coach who just doesn't really care comes from. He then brought up participation trophies and how he wasn't a fan of them. I want to make clear, senior night is a definition of participation trophy. You could have won every game or lost every game in your high school career and you're going to get the same exact thing for senior night. When I played, I remember, we never cared about senior night, we cared more about the game. We didn't want people to remember what our senior night was like. We wanted people to remember us hanging banners in the gym. But I guess times have changed and people care more about participating trophy rather than ultimate team goal. He was angry about his injured son's playing time. His son started senior night after missing two and a half games due to a hurt knee. We took a one-nothing lead and I pulled him out because there's a difference between being cleared to play and being one hundred percent healthy. We were four and oh, and the games his son missed or played part-time coming back from his injury. So no, I don't know better than the doctor downtown, but I did what was better for the team. Here's a couple of quick pieces from my award speech that left him feeling like he was taken out behind the woodshed after hearing. Parents, your turn. This isn't to call anyone out or tell any people what they did wrong. This is to set expectations for the coming years. Because with parents trying to pull kids in one direction and the team trying to pull another, we're never going to be successful. We all need to buy into what we're doing as a program. If you ever have questions or concerns, feel free to come, talk to me or email me. Another piece, I know soccer is an intense sport, wrestle missed calls, but I guarantee you, we didn't lose a game this year due to the refs. Every game we lost this year, we controlled our own destiny. I encourage parents to just try and be fans when you come to our games. Cheer and support your kids, let me deal with coaching, let me deal with refs. And lastly, parents, do what you do best. Love and support your child and let everyone else just do their job. I had to address the parents during my speech because this parent had to be escorted out of one of our games due to his behavior. The ref gave him a warning, our game administrator gave him warnings, and then the alternate PD had to be called to escort him away from the game due to his behavior. With everything being said, all I care about is the players and that I'm giving them the best experience possible. In my survey, every returner wanted me back and in the schools anonymous evaluations survey, every player wanted me back except for two. This parent happens to have two kids on the team. If this parent has concerns, again, bring them to me so I can help because I'm not going anywhere. My last thing is about Jay Fitzpatrick. The same one or two people come in here every week and berate Jay over and over again with no facts, no solutions, and just vague arguments. They just keep repeating over and over again about the decline in school population. A quick Google search and you will see school attendance is down twenty percent across the state. Jay has four hundred students and over eight hundred parents that keep happy. Out of those twelve hundred or so people, yeah, some will dislike Jay. I just want to show my support for Jay by saying he is one of the people that made my time at the school so memorable. People like Missy Connors, Mark Anthony, Jay Fitzpatrick, Doc McGrews, Anur Sadi, Kathy Frazier, Corey Rue, Brendan Wally, the Custodians, these are the type of people that make school memorable. Jay doesn't have to direct traffic or do senior night presentations. He does it because he enjoys seeing the kids outside the walls of school. Honestly, I don't know how he does it, especially going through COVID where he can't make anyone happy. I just want to remind Jay, don't give in to the handful of people that stand up here and think they can do a better job than you. There's hundreds of kids and families that you have touched and made a positive impact in their life. And that's why you do it and that's why I hope you continue to do it. Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public input tonight? No? Seeing none now, close public input. Agenda review?
Make a motion to accept the agenda with the added attachments.
Anything to add or discuss? All right, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of minutes?
Make a motion to accept the approval of minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Any discussion?
I just have a comment on public input, section four. It just seems like we should give balance to the different speakers, whether it's abbreviating the third speaker or giving more detail for the first two speakers. It just seems a little strange the way it's written.
I agree with that. I wonder if it's because it's the same input as previous meetings perhaps? But that's a good note, Tim.
It's just unbalanced, it seems.
Yeah, I agree. Any other comments or changes? Tim, can we see if we can adjust those?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstained.
One abstention, sorry. Finance committee expenditure reports. Does anybody have any questions? I think, did you just come out of a finance committee meeting?
Yes, we did.
Everything was probably addressed there.
Yeah, Heidi gave us one minor update on technology, but other than that, there was really no discussion.
Okay, great. So no questions? Revenues? I don't see any questions there. Buildings and grounds report. I'm noting that the sound system for the gym is still maybe on backorder.
Yeah, we're still waiting.
A pump out for repair, some waste sanitary line issues, and it's plowing season.
Maybe.
We might get snow, maybe. Student rep report?
Sure, I will speak on behalf of Grace. Prior to winter break, student council hosted Winter Bash, which has been a tradition over the past five or six years. It's a smaller version of Winter Carnival. All of the games are holiday themed. So we ran an abbreviated schedule in the morning time and then all got together inside the gymnasium, competed as a class, ended the day in the auditorium with good news assembly and some more competition type things. It was a great day. We had a good portion of students here, most of them participating, which is always cool to see. They compete against each other as a class, they compete against each other and with each other as a school. So it's class pride and spirit as well as school pride and spirit. So always fun. So kudos to Mrs. Barber, who is the student council advisor this year, as well as the kids of student council. We have more kids in student council this year in all of our co-curriculars and we've had a long time. But student council has a handful of seniors that are doing a great job and remarkably a handful, an equal number of freshmen who have jumped in who are doing it as well. So that's great for the sustainability over the next four years as long as they continue. Over break, we had some basketball happening in the Guilford High School Tournament. We didn't do as well as we had hoped and I'll leave it at that. These stats are specific to as of the twenty-third of December. The boys' basketball team did win its first game prior to break. It's their first win in a couple of years, so that was a highlight for them. They lost in overtime a few days before that and finally got the win, which is great. The girls' basketball team, regular season record, again, prior to break was four wins, zero losses. Currently ranked first in D three. They did beat Summersworth as I was told this evening. Cheerleading is back as well. They've been on hiatus for the past few years. There hasn't been demand and so this year we have a strong group of nine to ten girls that are back out there trying it. We have a former graduate who was a cheerleader here at the time, who is coaching the team. And that's great. Indoor track is also back. First meet was over the break. I don't have any data on how they did. Unified basketball has their first game tomorrow here at three-thirty. And Alpine skiing hits the slopes for their first meet at Gunstock on January sixth. Soon enough, robotics will be up and running with their new game, whatever that might be. But I don't know if Grace has those details or not. I do not, so that's Grace's report as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. And then you're next. Sorry, I'm trying not to put my glasses on every time.
Good to see everybody. If you were not here at the last meeting, I did present graduation requirements. So if you were not here, I have a presentation, which is the presentation that I put, so please grab it. I think it would be quite informative for you so you can read at your leisure at home. One of the things I had mentioned to you that I was going to bring back was the program of studies. And I'm bringing it back here tonight as a discussion item, nothing more than that. I'm not looking for any decisions to be made. But I certainly am interested in letting you know what we're doing and where we're at, some of the significant changes and hearing what recommendations, thoughts and questions that you have that we can work on with Assistant Superintendent Jizokas over the next month to bring back to you for the beginning of February. We had a meeting this morning with the counseling department to begin this process of scheduling for next year. We've been working with department leaders for a couple of months now, putting together the contents of the program of studies, which is basically all of the courses that we offer here, as well as the breakdown of graduation requirements and things of that sort. So a few changes that are specific, that are worth mentioning now. And the first one is in the category of special education. This year, we have been co-teaching a regular education teacher as well as a special education teacher. We've been teaching those courses that have more than fifty percent of students with an IEP in them. And so although it hasn't gone as smoothly as one would hope, it's the beginning of something that can only expand and get better. Co-teaching is a challenge. It takes a lot of trust in the person that you're working with. In our case of math, we have two guys who coached baseball together, also co-teaching math, and it works out well. They know each other, they trust each other, they can access each other's plans in the lesson book and what have you, in grade book. In some of the other areas, it's a little bit more challenging. We had strangers at the beginning of the year who came together and they're doing the best that they can. But we hope to continue co-teaching some of those courses that are in need in grades nine and ten, primarily in math as well as English. The other thing in special education that we are looking at doing is rebranding our skills classes. Currently, we offer a skills class to every student who has an IEP. And that skills class is a general class that someone goes to to work on things that they might be working on at that moment in time versus something very specific to their IEP goals. So what we would like to do moving forward next year is to eliminate the skills classes, a general class that kids could take, and specialize it more for a student with a specific goal in their IEP. So for example, if Matt, Mr. Jizokas has a goal of working with math inside his IEP, we'd like that new skills class, that math foundations class, to really hone in on the specific work that he needs. That way, he is getting the instruction inside the classroom with the co-teacher and the regular ed teacher and then having a later opportunity at some point in the day to go in and get further individualized instruction, working towards their math goals. So that's one of the things that we're doing with special education. Any questions about that before I move on?
Would both classes be credit fair?
Yes, absolutely. Which is important, especially for that second class. We're asking high school kids to give up doing something fun in order to improve themselves. And we would be looking at doing this both in English and in math.
We have the buy-in of the special ed director?
Yes. Oh, and this is, yeah, this is the brain work, the brainchild of Rich and Ruthie.
Okay.
And we've been talking about it in the admin team meetings for several weeks. Any other questions? All right. The next thing that we have to pay attention to is financial literacy. The state has decided that financial literacy will be a course that needs to be offered in every high school in the state of New Hampshire. So we have two options, two choices with this. And one is to develop a standalone course that is taught by either a business teacher or family consumer science teacher or a member of the social studies department. A standalone class, meaning Matt signs up, we're going to call you Matt, is that okay? Matt signs up for financial literacy. And it's a graduation requirement. We got to check that box that he took it at some point over graduation, or over the course of four years prior to graduation. The second option, which is my preference, is the embedded personal finance into a currently existing course, such as economics, which is already a graduation course, graduation requirement. Economics also has a unit within it that is about money, banking, saving and investing. So once we are to learn what the curriculum standards actually entail, we could figure out how much of it we're already doing in the embedded economics class versus how much we have to add to. So those are the two options. I can't tell you right now which one we're going to do. The state, when they decide that there's going to be a new course, they send it to a committee where they establish the rules. It has not gone to the committee, or if it has gone to the committee, it has not come out of the committee with the rules yet. So it has left many of us going, we're not sure what to do. Should we go standalone or should we just prepare to embed it? The obvious, easier answer, more efficient use of resources is to embed it. So unless you have an opinion on this one, I'd like to proceed with embedding it. And if they change the rules sometimes between now and the end of spring, then I may be coming back to you saying, they changed the rules and we can no longer embed it.
So they want this for next year?
Correct.
We also have the citizenship requirement coming up too. So that's two new requirements on you, yeah. I like the embedded idea.
I think, I don't actually love it. It's fine for next year, but I just think that a lot of times when things are embedded, it's a project on personal finance, which is, I think that looking at the resources for next year, it's totally fine to have it embedded and to assess the curriculum and what is currently offered. But I also think that when it's a standalone course, that kids get more. I think obviously there's more offered and I think that it would be a nice elective alternative or requirement, I guess, would be more adequate. So I'm in favor of having it embedded for next year, but I would like to revisit it and discuss it being a standalone in the future.
So I will say that we also have an elective, which is a personal finance elective. So if a student wanted to take it on its own, aside from it being a requirement, they could. And we may be back here in two months with me telling you it has to be a standalone. It's just, it's, even with the citizenship test, there are so many unknowns and things and rules that have not been addressed that so many of us are going, we're going to do the best that we can, knowing that that might be the wrong thing.
But that's next year too, it's not this year, is it?
Correct. Beginning with the class of twenty twenty-four, the citizenship class needs to be a requirement. So we have, so that goes to the next thing. The citizenship test, we've developed it and we have had, we discussed this on a regular basis as to what is the best implementation of this. Again, there's no rules that have come down that says, all right, the students have to sit, just like the SATs, and take a hundred and twenty-eight question test in one sitting. We've asked questions such as, can we chunk it up into different sections at different times, over different years? Does it have to be done on paper versus electronic? And all of our questions have fallen on deaf ears at this point. So we have prepared for both. We are running a government class next second semester, where we are going to pilot running the citizenship test with that course. Any kid who passes it between now and for the indefinite future, we're checking that box saying you have met that requirement. It's just a matter of how we want that to be met. We have talked about things such as making an online test available and you can take it on your own time as many times as you want. Because ultimately, that test is just, it's a measurement of your recall at that moment in time. It's not necessarily about the end assessment to a particular civics course. If it was that easy, it would just be the final exam for every civics course. But there are questions that are on that exam that are not civics related. There are geography questions or history questions. It's not just civics. So we have explored all of the different ways and we have yet to land on something. But we do know that starting next semester, we're going to try to start getting kids passing that test.
So the citizenship test is not related to a credit, it's simply passing a test?
We will have to report to the state at the end of the year, these kids passed at least the seventy percent on the citizenship test.
It's the same test that, you know, immigrants need to take when they... And the personal finance, do we know if that's a credit, full credit or half credit?
I believe it's a half credit, but again, I have not seen the specific rules.
Is it, if you, with personal finance, if you sort of plan for the worst, which is that they would have to take a standalone class, is that going to be easier to plan for the worst and then get more flexible? If we plan for the more flexible option, is it going to be harder to readjust?
Both are going to be troublesome in their own way. If we create a standalone course, it means that other courses, other electives, and I'll use the business teacher as an example. If she's going to have four or five sections of personal finance that she has to teach as a requirement, that's four or five sections of something else, one of her electives that she may not teach, which may be a programming class, maybe an entrepreneurship class. So regardless of where it goes, it's going to rob someone of something. So we look at business because Mrs. Cove, who is the business teacher, has been teaching the personal finance class for a long time and it makes sense. We look at family consumer science because Mrs. Kelly teaches an independent, living on your own class, which we can morph into the personal finance class and you can sprinkle in some of that peripheral, living on your own stuff, how to fold sheets, fold sheets, how to go grocery shopping, iron and things of that sort. So we feel confident with being able to do that. We just may have less kids cooking, baking cookies next year.
If there's not a staffing implication, then I guess I would be happy leaving it up to you all to decide what works best. I don't know if somebody else wanted to make a motion or express a strong opinion one way or another.
Make a motion at this point to loop up to administration what's best for next year.
My second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah, there's more.
Well, we got personal finance out of the way.
So the last thing is freshman seminar. I took the risk this year of eliminating freshman seminar, hoping that we would be able to embed it into some of the other courses. And it hasn't worked out as well as I had hoped. It's tough to do and while I think that over time we could get there, I think the quicker, more effective, more efficient use of resources is going to be to put it back in as a requirement for freshmen. So every freshman coming into the building, their first semester of high school, will take this freshman seminar course, which is a transition course to help kids get acclimated to the high school, knowing who the players are, knowing we go through everything with them, the research component, the technology integration component, the career interest component, I think it's worthwhile. It runs for a semester.
What does that turn into?
So it goes from, you spend the first half of the year doing freshman seminar, second half of the year doing citizenship, which is watered down civics, focusing more on the local level of civics, both local being school as well as city, town, state.
Can we get the kids that didn't take it down into it for a second, Smester? Bring it back. There's a lot of things I think that they are missing.
We could, what we focused on this year was really trying to make sure that they were getting the meat and potatoes that would help them down the road. Not as thorough of a job as it would have been done had it been a standalone class. But I don't know if kids have lost as much, but it was definitely delivered in a different way.
The career piece I thought was really, that's the piece that stood out for me as a parent.
Do you think that, I know the state is not very forthcoming. They like to really just hand down edics and, but, you know, would there be an option in the future of possibly breaking up the citizenship test? Does it say any, there's no real guidance, am I correct?
Correct.
That the citizenship has to be completed in this new year.
Correct.
So there may even be an opportunity down the road for freshmen to complete part of it or?
Correct. So what I mentioned earlier about chunking it, just certain, our plan is to test those kids this year after they've completed their citizenship course, just to see where it falls. What I'm not sure of is if that test becomes a formative test so that they can see what's on it versus, oh, you've got thirty-five correct and we can save those thirty-five in the queue so that you don't have to repeat those thirty-five. But our, so last year, you had voted to implement the American Government course, which is going to be an upper level junior, senior graduation requirement that satisfies the civics requirement. So the freshmen coming in will take seminar and take citizenship. So the freshmen coming in will take seminar, uh, and take citizenship as freshmen and they get their elective credit for that, but it does not meet the expectation of that government class of the civic standards. So it's our way of making sure that we are really honing in and getting kids exposure to civics and government as freshmen and then later down the road is upper class. And that's it.
That citizenship class is, um, really jam packed. It's fast paced. It's, um, I just spent this afternoon helping with an essay. It's like, I, I'm taking citizenship right now, so.
How you doing?
I would be surprised if they test well. I'm just saying, I just, yeah, that's the one thing that's kind of overwhelming.
So the other thing that the state has given direction to, they, they, the, the social studies minimum standards, this is, this is what needs to be taught at all of the grade levels throughout the state. Have, they have not been looked at and revised in social studies since two thousand and six. And so they just recently, this past summer, uh, put out, I think it's a sixty-five page document that goes K through twelve of what should be taught at various levels. Um, and it's, it's different enough that, um, it just may require many schools, us included, to examine exactly what we're teaching and, and pivot.
It just seems like that was the feedback I got from Beckham, that it was too much, too fast and that they're just jumping from one point to the next without really time to absorb it.
Yeah, it's fair. But that's good. Good to know.
It's my argument, driver's ed test.
Well, at the end of the day, it's what it is. Can you recall this, these facts?
Absolutely. Any one of us took a driver's ed test right now, there's a, a high, good likelihood that we would fail and a seventy-five don't take it again.
And a hundred and twenty-eight questions is not, that, that's, that's gonna take some time.
Yeah, no, it's not. Neither one of those.
No teacher would ever give a test of a hundred and twenty-eight. Come on. No educator would agree with that.
One of the things to bear in mind, um, you have a committee looking at graduation requirements. I think there has been, um, a concerted effort here to keep graduation requirements for non-honors diplomas to twenty-four credits, because over four years, that allows in a seven-period schedule, students to always have one class or one period to either use as a study hall or for some other kind of relief. Um, we are in a very different world now in New Hampshire than existed ten years ago. Learn everywhere is a state law and although it has, you haven't seen a huge number of, of students showing up asking for credits, I think it's, it's not official yet, but I believe there are a whole bunch taking dance in Alton who are probably going to knock on the guidance department doors here within the next couple of years, asking for high school credit for those classes. It will be up to you, joint board, to decide whether or not those should fill FIS Ed graduation requirements, but it will not be up to you whether or not we issue credits. The credits will count. So the reason I bring this up, and it's not only about learn everywhere, because there's V-Lax and there are kids taking classes at night in, in various forums, either at a community college or online, is that it is easier than it used to be to earn more than twenty-four credits and still have that extra period or that potentially free period or that study hall in a daily schedule. So you might decide you're more willing than you used to be to either extend a half-year course to a full year and make it a requirement, or even to add other requirements. You, you might ultimately decide that it's reasonable to require twenty-five credits for whatever reasons, right? Because of some of these things for graduation. Understanding that there are more options for students these days to earn credits than there once were.
I don't think, you're not looking for more input on that?
No, I, I, I bring this to you because this, these will be the significant changes in the, in the program of studies, um, next month. So if you have an opinion or questions, it would be great to be able to go back and dissect that with my team, to be able to come back with that information to make next month's conversation vote a little bit more efficient.
Thank you. Everybody good on that? Okay. Um, technology report?
I would just note that there is a technology report in the packets on the table that is different than the one we emailed for anyone who read it yesterday.
That's very cool.
It is. Um, so I'll just summarize that we, uh, Mr. Jozokas and I spent a lot of time, meeting with every member of our IT staff and also with each principal and some other staff in the three schools to talk about how the year was going. As you are all aware, we have an entirely new IT organization and, um, as a result of those meetings, we made a couple of changes, um, some of which became effective today. And I've outlined those for you here, um, on your report. We have not changed anybody's titles or compensation. Um, we have changed a little bit of division of responsibility and are meeting a little more frequently um, to make sure that we're achieving our goals.
That's a lot. I'm glad you filled those two positions. That's great. Uh, curriculum, Matt?
Good evening. Uh, in your packet today, uh, we have the data dashboard. Uh, we've discussed this earlier in the year and trying to bring some information, uh, to the board beyond just that of our state assessments. Um, when I first spoke, I talked about school purpose and what is the Prospect Mountain High School's school purpose. And in order to answer that, we have to take a look at, uh, some guiding questions. Uh, what are we building? Each of us need, must understand what the most important work of our organization is. Second, why is it important? Uh, what is the compelling reason behind why we are building what we are building? And third question is what is the role that each individual plays? Uh, everyone must know what the role they play in order to build what we are building. So my hope is with the data dashboard, it'll help us focus on answering these three questions uh, through our vision, our mission and our core values here at Prospect Mountain. Uh, my goal, uh, is to, at each quarter, uh, present this information, uh, to you. Uh, some of the information will remain static, uh, especially when it's assessments, uh, where we only have the assessment, uh, later in the school year. Uh, however, the other pieces will change over time. But my hope is, is that as we build this and we continue to look at it, we can see trends, uh, as they go forward. Um, so part of what we came up with, uh, myself and, uh, Jay, uh, and, and the admin team spoke about what it is that we feel, uh, really paints the true picture of a Prospect Mountain High School student. Uh, so the first, if you flip over to the first page, um, talking about our vision, um, in terms of the graduate being prepared for college and/or career by meeting academic, social and emotional expectations. Um, and so you can see, uh, the, uh, graduation data, uh, over the last several years. Uh, again, we, the twenty-one, twenty-two is not out yet. Um, we'll be getting that sometime, uh, shortly as to, uh, what our percentage rates are for that piece of it. Uh, and again, if you look at the dropout rate, uh, it's, it's pretty low, uh, considering if you look, uh, in other schools in our area, we are, uh, right above, uh, or if not better than any of the schools around.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So, um, my first question is, so kids that choose to go the high set route are considered a dropout?
Yes. They're, they're completers, uh, but they're considered dropouts. Uh, the same, the same pieces.
Is that, that's prospects? That's state's?
State, yep, yep. The same is with, if a student takes a, a fifth year to complete, um, if they, if they do not complete prior to the start, uh, they are considered a dropout in a four-year cohort, but also now they do a five-year, so you can look at both four and five years. This is a four-year cohort.
So what does retain?
Those would be kids that are, uh, would be coming back for a fifth year.
For a fifth year, so they would not complete their diploma by August twenty-eight?
Correct. Well, some might, depending if they were in the summer, if they, if they were able to complete stuff in summer school.
Right, but, and that's, I guess, is my question.
They would be picked up in that pre, that year. So in other words, uh, if a student in the twenty, graduating class of twenty-twenty-two wasn't completed by graduation, but finished up shortly thereafter, then they would be considered a graduate of the class of twenty-twenty-two. But if they don't, let's say they hit another semester or another year.
Then they have to take.
Correct, yep.
And I think to Ann's point, it would be nice to see those separated. I know you have to count them together for the state, but the high set and the dropouts, I think it would just be nice to see those numbers broken up.
And I, and I understand it is difficult to track down sometimes the kids that say they're gonna go the, take the high set. It's hard to kind of follow that and that's really low number, which is great. Um, I was, uh, that was just a clarified question, but, um, I was interested in the, in what the retained means because I know some kids do finish a, a month after or, or two months after, you know, summer school, so.
Correct, yep. And I'll, for the next go-around, I'll make sure I break those out even before, okay? Uh, if you flip over to the next one, uh, next page, uh, Prospect Mountain Core Values. Uh, so there are five, um, of our core values, empathy and diversity, grit, integrity, intellectual curiosity and self-control. And in that document, uh, it gives you a little bit more definition on there. The data that you will see here, uh, comes from, uh, the periods three and four courses. So the teachers were asked to use the rubric that you see here, uh, and go through and assess their students, uh, their periods three and four students. Uh, so when you flip over to see the chart, uh, you will see, uh, how our students have done, uh, in the class of twenty-two, twenty-four, uh, excuse me, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and obviously for twenty-six, this is their first go-around. And again, if we look at our mission, our mission is personalized education. Uh, and one of the things, if you look at this, you'll see, uh, grit and intellectual curiosity are the two lowest of, of the group. I mean, they're not that significant, but they are below, uh, what the other three are. Uh, and so when we start to look at that idea of personalized education, uh, my hope would be as we start to trend in that direction, um, we'll see that grit and that intellectual curiosity align better with, uh, empathy, self-control and integrity. And again, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. You can finish if you.
Uh, and, and so to go all around that personalized education, um, you know, we've been working on coming up with a shared definition, because if you ask somebody what personalized education is, uh, everybody in this room could have a different, um, definition of that. So the faculty, staff and administration have been working on this and, uh, they came up with providing a learning structure to allow students' ownership of their own unique learning process and personal individuality to learn essential skills and responsibilities, allowing to expand their potential. So the idea is that we're gonna use that shared definition. Um, we'll start to look at what that looks like in a classroom uh, and then we'll be asking teachers to go back into their units of, of study and really start to look at how they're gonna incorporate some of that personalized learning. Uh, and again, as we track this over time, we'll see if that approach is in fact working with those two areas that we've talked about.
Um, is there any plans to have the students self-assess on these factors?
Um, we have, not as of yet, um, but certainly I think that's something coming down the pike. Uh, again, Jay and I haven't had a conversation on that, but that's certainly good to get feedback from the kids as well.
Especially as they get older, for the juniors, seniors, I think it's more difficult for the, for the freshmen to relate.
But it's good for them too, because then it gets them to start to think about what it's gonna be like there. Uh, the next is our SAT comparison. Again, uh, we pulled the, uh, the data, the mean scores, uh, and then we looked at the proficiency versus the state. Uh, this information isn't new to you. You guys have seen this before. But again, uh, in keeping with that, that dashboard about the whole picture of our students, uh, we wanted to make sure that that was in there as well. And then, uh, we have co-curricular participation, taking a look, uh, at our athletics uh, and also our clubs and groups. Uh, and again, right now, if you look at the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, that's just our fall information. Uh, we'll get some, some winter numbers up there as well. And again, we're also gonna be doing this, uh, at our elementary schools uh, to kind of see how that is, is trending, if our, our participation in our clubs uh, in our athletics is either growing or decreasing, uh, and it'll help us make some decisions down the line and maybe even find out why in one way or the other. And then lastly, um, taking a look at, uh, student and faculty attendance data and again, tracking that over time, um, to see what that looks like. Uh, and again, it's tough right now with our students because, uh, kids are getting sick left and right. So, you know, that number drops down, uh, but again, I, I think it's good to kind of look at that. Uh, this is the overall school. Uh, we are also tracking, uh, each graduation year to see if there's some trends with that as well. Uh, and again, uh, my goal is to bring this to you on a quarterly basis, uh, and, and continue to update that so you can see, uh, growth over time.
Thank you. That's great.
Are there any plans to, in the elementary, obviously we're going for some help with the math scores, reading scores. What's the plan for the high school kids? Are we giving them any small group work, any? Cause I see the math scores are low.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, so, so, uh, we're in conversations regarding that. Um, you know, we're looking at, uh, that the title funds as potentially being able to hire people to come in and do some of that, that small group.
That RTI type thing?
That, yeah, sort of an RTI, but also at the high school level, you know, a lot of times, you know, when we, when we look at those intervention pieces of it, it's also helping them within their classroom. So not only are we helping them support them in an English class or an algebra class, we're doing some backfilling as well to try to get them prepared so that when they hit grade ten, eleven, twelve, they're, they're better prepared for that piece of it, so.
This is really very preliminary. It's great to have charts and graphs put together and to have data kind of organized in a way that's useful, but this is really the beginning. There's so much more that we need to do and are going to be able to do with this. But, I mean, the question about math kind of asks itself. What, what I wanna note on the page regarding SAT mean scores and proficiency rates is that these are only among tested students. Not all of our students, even though this is New Hampshire's required,
Right.
right, required accountability exam, it's not. So we've asked Jay and we'll be adding in data on how many students are taking the SAT versus are not and how can we compare that potentially? Because it's, it's, it's nice, I think it's very valuable to plot these values next to state averages, right? That's informative, because otherwise you might look at something like the difference between math proficiency in sixteen, seventeen and seventeen, eighteen and think, I wonder if the test changed. Maybe the test got harder in some significant way. But then you look at the state average score and think, oh, well, maybe a little, but maybe not enough to explain what we're looking at. So there, there's a lot more that we need to do here, but this is a, it's a good place to be. This is a good, good start.
Well, thank you, Matt. I think, I think this is great information for us to have as a board and I'm really glad we're measuring the core values also, because I imagine that, you know, it's a little hard, subjective to try to measure, but at the same time, it, it highlights, you know, that you said we need to build something. We need to build human beings who can function passionately in the world, so it's nice to see that as a focus. You mentioned, um, tracking in the elementary school on the participation. Um, you mentioned athletics. Were you tracking the co-curricular also?
Yes, yes, yep. So we're trying to mirror it as best we can, uh, both the elementary and the high school. Uh, there might be some slight differences based off the school themselves. And again, we're trying to have what, what makes Barnstead unique, what makes Alton unique. Uh, but it, again, if we can continue to look at similar data from the time that they start kindergarten until the time they graduate, again, you can really see a lot of different things that will tell us the story of what's going on.
Thank you. Uh, Tim, superintendent's report.
Um, I provided a copy in your packets of guidelines for public input, which you've already heard read out loud. Um, I'll provide those, um, at the other board meetings as well. That's by your request. There's a letter in your packet from Drummond Woodsum, um, informing you of an increase in their hourly rates. You have a couple of options. One is to accept the new rates. Oh, Heidi's paying attention now. Uh, one option is to accept the new rates and, um, I would ask that you, uh, consider a motion and vote in that regard. Um, another option would be to authorize us to continue working with Drummond Woodsum under these new rates effective the first of the year and direct us to issue a request for proposals um, to several law firms to get some comparative information about cost of legal representation.
When was the last time we did a cost comparison?
I wasn't here. So at least four years. I don't, I don't think you'll find that Drummond Woodsum is particularly high compared to the other firms that specialize in school law, and I don't want to imply that I think that'll be, I don't. I think, I think they're probably right in line. Um, I recently had another firm offer to do kind of a, a job, a, a one-off job that we needed done, and they came in way above what even these rates are.
How's our, uh, what'd you look in that line right now?
Legal? We have it in the packet. How are we doing this year? How am I doing? How am I doing?
Well, well, she's. Isn't there, is there a particular lawyer that you work with?
Yeah, we work with Matt Upton, generally.
Right, so you have that relationship, which I think is also.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we continue our.
We're doing great, she says.
Our relationship with Drummond Woodson and accept their increase in hourly rates.
I just want to know, budget line, were you able to absorb the cost that's going up from now until the new budget?
It'll be over.
It won't be as much, well.
We're always over.
It won't be as much over as last year, not so far anyway.
Any further discussion? I'd like to add that I, I think working with an attorney is, it's critical to work with an attorney that you can trust and really work with.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I have included in your packets, it's, it's got yellow and blue highlight in it, a proposed meeting schedule for this month. It is different from your normal meeting schedule. Everything in yellow involves a school board, either the Alton or Barnstead Board or this joint board. Everything in blue is a budget committee meeting or hearing in one of the two towns, and therefore only involves some of you, except of course for the deliberative session, which involves Alton Board members, I apologize, I wrote joint board there. The, the most important thing that's different here is it moves the Barnstead monthly board meeting a week early, and it moves the Alton board meeting both a week late and to a different night of the week, because that Monday is a holiday. If any of you can't work with this schedule, would you just let Debbie and me know, maybe tonight or tomorrow? If that's all right?
I cannot make the January 15th.
None of these work.
Email us.
Even tonight?
Even tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll email that finalized tomorrow, so if you don't want to perform for the camera and want to email us with a real concern, please do, and we'll try to accommodate.
Is the public as well aware?
And we'll, yep, so we'll change the, we'll have this done tomorrow, so it'll be early enough to change the signs in front of the schools and put it on our websites and things like that. Last month, I didn't bring additional copies tonight, because it was a lot of color copying, but last month I gave you each a hard copy of a memorandum of understanding with the Alton Police regarding the School Resource Officer Program. I had made pretty significant edits to that, so if you looked at it and you have no feedback, that's great. If you looked at it and you do have some feedback, I ask that you email me soon. If I hear nothing, I'm going to assume that you think I did a pretty good job, and I'll be meeting with the Chief of Police within the next few weeks to talk about that, and then bringing you a proposed MOU, maybe in February, maybe in March, once we're able to process that. Thank you, Lila.
I liked the FERPA considerations in there.
Elections here at the high school, you'll recall from your December meeting that we've received a request from the town administrator in Alton to consider having two elections a year held here at the high school. We talked a little bit about how that could work, but doesn't really work with school being in session, because of the way they want to do it now. They want access to the gym, if not both the cafeteria and the gym, unlike in the past, when they used to be able to use the auditorium, in which case we could just have school open that day. This would make it harder. In the next couple of weeks, Debbie and I will be working on draft school calendars, and unless somebody wants to have a conversation right now, I will draft school calendars that do accommodate voting here at the school. And then you don't, you'll act on it when you act on it, you don't have to make a decision.
Is it two days?
It's, it's two days most years and three days some years when there are primaries, but I, I can seek further clarification.
How's it working in Barnstead? Okay? Parents are accepting?
I'm hearing, I'm hearing negative feedback from Barnstead parents, because they've been closing for elections.
I haven't heard any negatives about it, but.
I don't think everybody necessarily loves a non-school day during the middle of the week. It's a childcare issue, but it may be easier for some if the high school was also closed.
Sure, that's true.
Yeah, from a community perspective, I think as a parent with some of the kids teach school, it makes sense. I'm curious, though, where they had elections previously in the auditorium, what was it about that location that didn't work well?
Yeah, so I don't think it's so much that they had a bad experience in that room, as they now have some voting booths that require a certain amount of space that won't fit down there. And they don't want to put people up on the stage because of access concerns, they, they just want more space.
Voting booths either, so we used to wait in a long line to vote when it was in the auditorium. Some people objected to that. In the church, there are a lot, you just walk up really essentially.
Yeah, the lines are shorter.
If the five of you who represent Alton have particular feelings about this, we could talk about this at your next meeting, but I would draft calendars in which all three schools are closed on these days.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so item number six, which comes in three parts, here we go, is an update on strategic planning. So first, open enrollment. On the table, I've given you a proposed warrant article. There's not much to it, which belies the amount of effort that went into drafting something so simple, that it's on your agenda actually, under action items, to consider that warrant article. You have to specify two things. One is, and I have the wrong version of my memo, hopefully you have the right one. One is that we become an open enrollment district, and students who don't live in Alton or Barnstead are allowed to attend here. It used to say the percentage of our student, but I had to change that today. So number one is that we are an open enrollment district under RSA. By adopting the terms of RSA 194D, this allows students who don't reside in the two towns to attend the school. The second thing that has to be defined, and this is in the article, right now it says zero percent of the resident student population eligible to seek enrollment outside of the district. It's really unclear, even after a year and a half's worth of discussion about it, exactly what the legislature intended an open enrollment district or school to be. Like there are two, two or three different things that it might mean. So one of the things we have to define is how many of our students are allowed to leave under open enrollment, but we can say zero, which is what I'm suggesting, because our intention is to become a receiving school under this law. And I've foreshadowed by talking about the fact that it's kind of unclear what this law really means, I'll come back to that. Item B on this page, I'm on page two of my report memo.
Can we just go back to the.
Please.
I just have a question. Are we officially a district?
Fair enough. SAU 301.
Well, I mean, I, we'd have to be careful with the use of that word, if we're not, if we're not a district.
To see if SAU 301, the shared SAU, or something along those lines.
We could certainly, so you're looking at the language of the proposed article?
Yeah.
We could certainly phrase it to see if SAU 301 shall vote. I don't know, Eunice, this came from them.
Why wouldn't it be just?
Because the votes are by the district's legislative bodies, the SAU 72 and SAU 86 legislative bodies.
Do you say the districts that make up? SAU 301?
I'm just wondering if we can vote on the spirit of it today, and then have the attorney finish it?
Yeah. I was just questioning the last use of the word district.
Yeah.
Because that's, I mean, what, what is the district?
Better now than at the deliberative session.
I'll take care of that.
Do you want to move forward, Tim?
Yeah, when we, when we come to the action item, I, I just, I just wrote it, so I can read it to you then. So the, the law, once adopted, becomes effective immediately, that's not always the case, but under the terms of RSA 194D, it's effective as soon as the legislative bodies have taken action. So if the, let's assume for this discussion that the warrant articles pass in both towns, once that happens, then we become an open enrollment school here at Prospect Mountain High School, and we will be prepared to launch a website in April, within a week of, of that action taking place, that will include an application link for interested families. I will propose to you, you'll end up approving all of this in detail in your next few meetings, but I'll propose a late June application deadline with admissions at the beginning of July, which gives families time to understand where their children are likely to be attending high school the following September, except, but wait, there's more. This year, first time around, I would notify superintendents in districts where students who've expressed this interest reside of how many students have applied and of our willingness to admit them. Now what happens next is a little bit difficult to predict. I've outlined a few possibilities. The law, 194D, allows receiving schools, open enrollment districts, to bill up to eighty percent of their per pupil costs from the previous year, so our business office can calculate that, that's easy. And option number one, I suppose, is that some superintendent or school board might say, sure, no problem, send us the bill. There are other possibilities. One is that some other superintendent or school board might say, okay, let's talk about the price. Now that becomes a conversation with all of you that I would bring to you. Possibility number two is that some district might assert that their students can't do this, can't leave and attend our open enrollment school without some other authorization, either by their district's legislative body or by their school board. And then third, and there are other possibilities, I've just outlined three that I've thought of, some other district, depending on the numbers involved, might say, you know, maybe we should have a bigger conversation about sending everybody. Regardless of what happens, I'll keep you informed and make sure that the lines of communication with the other districts are as open as possible. I believe it's going to take two or three years to work this out. I think that this year, if provided this all passes, that the other districts in the area that house students who may wish to come here are, they're going to pay attention when I notify them of how much interest we've generated, and, and we'll just kind of have to see where that goes. I, I already know, and so do you, because I shared the commissioner's attorney's memo with you a year ago, last January, how the current commissioner of education interprets this law, but there are other ways to interpret this law. So we'll see what happens between now and next September. It's really hard to predict, you know, if or how many students could be walking through that door who don't live in Alton or Barnstead this coming September, very hard to predict that. But once the conversation started, you know, it's difficult for me to imagine that we won't find a, a good resolution to it, at least with some partner communities, or by asking for help from the State Board of Education and the commissioner himself for their interpretation of this law, which we may need, and we'll do that. So that's kind of where we are. I don't want to oversell what I think is likely to happen in the next six or eight months. I, I want everyone to understand that we're trying to do something that another district hasn't done in New Hampshire under this law. So that means that there's no template, no past practice for others to look at to understand how it works.
Tim, would you like a motion on the spirit of that one article?
You have it under action items.
Okay.
Yeah, is that all right?
Yes.
Just so I can. So number two, under strategic planning, has to do with public information about Prospect Mountain High School. We have a kickoff meeting this Thursday with Aptige to begin development of a new consolidated website for all of our systems, page three, top. The landing page, with, with your silent agreement, or lack of disagreement, I think the landing page would identify us as the Prospect Mountain Schools. We will not use the word district, and we will not assert that there's any kind of relationship here other than consolidated leadership, central office leadership and board of leadership. And then from there, we envision the site going four different places, one site for each of the three schools, where they have all their own information, just as they do now, but in the same format, look and feel. And then a fourth, which would be titled something like Open Enrollment and Innovation Programs, which is where we create essentially an electronic viewbook for this high school. Strategic planning so far has, has led us to a little more of a defined set of outcomes, so when we, we didn't get to do this in December, that's my fault, but we'll do it this month with, with faculty and staff here at the high school, then with students and parents through a combination of in-person meetings and, and some surveys. I think it's going to be important that we're able to articulate three, four or five things that make this school unique and special, and the kind of place I would want my kids to attend. I think, and we will test this with constituents and stakeholders here, right, the staff and the students and the parents, but the school culture here seems like it should be one of those things. It's been a strength of this institution since the doors opened. The motto, "We are Prospect," is wonderful for a place that is seeking to bring students from other towns and assimilate them in the population where everyone really is the same and is part of a single whole. I think we have something, some wonderful things in the freshman seminar program, the new Denpac advisory schedule, and a lot of participation in activities and some good school traditions like the winter carnival and some of the stuff that happens here in the spring, and you're all familiar with some of these things. There's, there's a lot of good stuff to talk about that does differentiate this school in some positive ways. I believe that the honors diploma program should be one of those things. We should highlight and accentuate that program, whether it's about to get added to or changed in any way is sort of irrelevant, we'll incorporate whatever changes come along, but that should be one of the things. I believe that robotics and engineering makes sense for this school because of the excellent tradition that the Bob the First Robotics Team has here, along with some of the course offerings in the program of studies that are already here, with Mr. Jozokas coordinating, we can work with the principal and high school staff to put together what it would take to satisfy pathway diploma requirements in that field, in robotics and engineering. That would probably include primarily classes that already exist, along with extended learning credits for maybe a couple of years of participation in the robotics program, maybe, or maybe also an internship or work experience or something like that. Again, it can be defined in the next couple of months. To me, the most important thing in highlighting a pathway diploma program in engineering and robotics is that the details will provide a template for us, that we could then turn to staff and say, see, this is what it looks like to have a pathway diploma program. Now what other areas might be relevant to our students and their families, or might meet a regional workforce need, that we could then replicate this in? Maybe it's health careers, maybe it's something else. But starting with this one gives us a relatively light lift. It's, it's something we practically already have, that should be highlighted, again, as something that differentiates this school from some of the other schools that students might choose to attend in the region. And this is going to get really fun, to the extent you all want to talk right now, versus in the future, some other things that we will be talking about. This is under number four, at the bottom of page three. We're at least going to bring you a conversation about a complete ban on cellular phones in this building during school hours. There is. complete ban on cellular phones in this building during school hours. There is a growing and overwhelming amount of evidence suggesting that students' social, emotional, and academic development over the last ten to fifteen years has not improved, has not improved, with twenty-four-hour-a-day access to social media and electronic communications via their smartphones. And again, when we're talking about ways to differentiate this school's learning environment, and our priorities and values, from other schools that students could choose to attend, this is something worth talking about.
Oh, I'm making the face, because it was a total different stance when everybody voted to change the handbook allowing kids to have their phones in.
Well, this is my fault.
And then all of a sudden, you know, they use them to learn, and now we're taking a different turn. So, I just find it funny.
Other pathway diploma programs for the future, who knows, maybe we develop another one or two quickly. That'll depend on community input. I think there's a separate conversation to be had here about athletic programs. Some of Mr. Jozokas's work on data has been really helpful. Did you know that middle school student participation in athletics is about double the rate of high school students' participation in athletics in these two towns? Did you know that? Because I learned that by reading the data. So, we'll be bringing you more about that. And I think it's probably going to make sense for us to put together a separate group to talk about athletics. I also was sort of amazed to find that winter sports participation plummets compared to the other two seasons. And I know you're constrained by gym space, and basketball rosters are small, and that kind of thing, but this is the kind of data that's good to have, when we're deciding things like, should we add a sport? Maybe we should, and maybe it should be during the winter. So, again, I think we set up another group and ask them to talk about that stuff. The data dashboard, I think, is part of this. I think there's a way to use simple, easy-to-access data on our website, so that people can come here and understand both what we value, how we do with regards to the things that we value, and also the fact that we're paying attention to it. And then, whatever else might come up. So, that's my bit on that. You want to talk about cell phones? Not right now?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
And then, finally, the Blended Learning Pilot is kind of taking care of itself at the moment, but it would, there would be information about that on the same part of the website, that talks about open enrollment, and provides application, an application portal for open enrollment students. The Blended Learning Pilot, at the moment, has been funded. The folks from Michigan Virtual have been working on setting that up, recruiting families, meeting with other partners, like the folks at TL Store. CG Studios is a design and public relations firm. Because we're grant funding this, that's nice, because it can be difficult to come to school boards and ask for money for PR, but because we have a grant funding our innovation school efforts, we're able to fund it that way.
Is that funding the website work also?
Some of it.
Percentage? Rough line?
Well, in this fiscal year, all, and then, starting next fiscal year...
Just the annual?
Yeah, just the annual. So, each SAU in its fiscal '24 budget is carrying a third of the ongoing costs for Aptige, but the startup costs, right now, we're grant funding. It's about $11,000. I think that's my report.
Thank you.
All right. So, onto Action Items. We have the budget and warrant articles. So, we have the Joint Budget Committee recommendations. Are we looking at a specific document for that?
I provided a memo on this topic, which you have in your packet on the table, dated today. The Finance Committee will want to report, so I'll be brief, but if you haven't had a chance to look this over, you can now. You should be aware, first and foremost, that the Joint Budget Committee recommended restoring a total of $75,544 to the proposed operating budget in function 2220, which is library and media services. I'll turn it over to your Finance Committee, I think, unless you have questions for me.
We did meet tonight, and this was a long discussion for the committee. We were looking into pros and cons, and, you know, what our original thinking was, and what our needs were for the school. And we certainly understand the importance of the media specialist, but we also understand the importance of being able to hire someone to do, to be funded by Title I, to help with reading. So, again, it was a long discussion. The Finance Committee did vote to recommend to the full board that we maintain our budget as we originally proposed it, and not agree with the Joint Budget Committee's recommendation.
So, you're bringing forward a motion for, sorry, there's a lot of information here.
Maintaining our...
The original.
The original.
Maintaining the original proposed budget.
Which would not have a media specialist?
It would, it does have a media specialist at point...
Yeah, so, this is probably important. So, the proposal was not to, is not, was not, has never been, to eliminate a position. The proposal was to change the funding sources, but that necessarily, because of the way Title I funding, grant funding works, it necessarily also means changing the day-to-day teaching assignment of an employee to three classes in reading intervention services, with the balance in the library. The original rationale was that there are two full-time employees in the library currently, so our goal, again, developing the recommendation, was to provide a way to get Title I services back into the school, which we haven't been able to provide for the last couple of years, to a student population that has a demonstrated need for reading intervention, without reducing the number of adults. There were, there are other ways to do it. There are other ways to pursue the Finance Committee's goal of a level-funded budget, but those, those could have reduced the number of adults. This proposal changes funding, but not positions. By changing funding, it does change some daily teaching assignments. Now, that's a little difficult, awkward to talk about here, because typically, you propose a budget, the budget is approved by the district meetings, and then, the principal and I assign teachers. And you generally don't know about it, and we assign teachers under both a collective bargaining agreement and under state law. And in New Hampshire, any public school teacher can be assigned outside of his or her area of certification, as long as it's not more than fifty percent of the time. Inside any area of a teacher's certification, we can assign teachers up to 100% of the time. And the principal really has that authority, so it's not something you generally think about or talk about here at board meetings. So, again, the proposal is not to eliminate a position, but it does have ramifications. It constrains the principal's ability to assign a staff member, who now must be assigned three periods out of seven to teach a certain kind of class.
So, Jay, what would be the impact if we took three periods away from the media specialist? I think that's an important question to ask. What would be the impact on the students?
Do you want me to answer?
She asked you.
All right. It would be significant. If we're talking about seven-period day, teachers teach five periods a day.
Right.
And three periods that are earmarked for Title I services leaves two more periods of availability for that, for the library media specialist to work here, or visit classrooms and work in classrooms.
So, what about the other person that works in the media center?
Yep.
So, what does that person do?
So, that person is an NA, not a certified library media specialist, or any, doesn't require any certification. So, if the librarian is in a classroom, helping a class, that person oversees crowd management, crowd control inside the library.
Are there study halls in here?
There are no study halls that are assigned to here, but currently, when we are desperate, we will use this area as a substitute.
Is this something that we need, this is an action item that we need to vote on this evening? Is that...
If we're maintaining the last vote, do we need to vote tonight?
The budget is an action item that's required tonight, because from here, it goes to budget hearings with the town budget committees, and those take place in both towns before the next joint board meeting, and from there, those articles are unwarranted.
I have to say, it's first I've ever heard of a budget committee adding money to a budget. Usually, it's the opposite. They usually take money out of our budget. So, I'm assuming they had a reason behind this.
Maybe there's some confusion. It's why one is here.
We did have a reason at that particular meeting. There were, there was an individual that spoke about the position, and then, actually, two teachers also spoke about how the position helped them in the classroom. And that was certainly something that we hadn't discussed, either at the board level or at the Finance Committee level before, had not heard. We had asked what the impact was, and originally, we were told that the media specialist position was agreeable to being able to do some Title I work. So, it all came...
It's hard, because we need Title I. I think we do need Title I in the school. We don't have it. I wish we had a way of implementing it before now. There are kids that slip through the cracks, because they're not coded. They need Title I.
It's going to be hard to find a point four.
Right.
For that...
For that position.
A person that's willing to do.
And we were told tonight that we have, we've been trying to fill that position, to use the grant funds, but we haven't been able to. We haven't been able to hire anybody. And it was expressed that even though the interpretation of the grant was a limited number of students, that's not really true, that we have a significant, well, I'm not going to say like ninety percent, but we have enough students that we really need.
Well, they have a very strong criteria to choose the students. It's a very strong criteria they have to follow, in order to satisfy Title I grants. They can't just assign students. You have to follow the criteria. So, that makes it more difficult, because you can't just use the grant money for anything. It has to be for those students that qualify. And that's where it makes it more difficult. What do we do? Because, you know...
I think we were also told that the way we had written the grant, or interpreted restrictions, we had put more on it than was necessary.
For whatever reason, in this school, when Title I money has been used in the past, it's been to serve a very, very small number of students, and that's not necessary under the federal law.
No, it doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be. We work with the Department of Education, when I say "we", I mean Mr. Jozokas, to define the criteria that we will use to identify gaps and qualify students. It could be dozens of students.
Right.
And is likely to be, I think, who would qualify here.
I guess...
To answer your question, do we have to take action tonight? Yes, we do.
Okay. I would just like to say, in the big scheme of things, it seems like these numbers, seventy-five thousand, twenty-eight thousand, even the 100, it doesn't really seem like it's that much money, in the big scheme of things, when I think our overall bottom line is how do we best serve our students?
Correct. And that's what we discussed. This isn't about the money. This is about the goals.
And so, I guess that's, that's the...
Let's say, the problem with Title I is, you have to have a person qualified to teach the Title I. What I'm hearing is, the person who's qualified to teach that is our media specialist. Is there another person?
But, that could still be done.
You see, that's what would have to go to non-public.
You know, that's, the budget is our responsibility, but...
Right.
That could still be done, if, you know...
Well, this issue was, what would I just say, that school board should take blame for this. It was brought up as positions and people that we should have never happened.
Right.
This should be just that. It's the budget.
It should be just simple...
The budget is the budget, and like I said, that's, that's some mistake that should be featured, we should rectify.
At last, in the fiscal '23 proposed budget, there were two position reductions, and I told you, don't worry, we'll figure it out. And we did.
So, I guess...
I'll make a motion to adopt the original budget that was presented last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. And discussion, we can always do more motions and a vote later, but...
Just so we're clear, we're talking about the original budget as submitted, right?
Yes.
Original?
The original.
And what did the original budget call?
I'm so, I'm sorry, and maybe it's just me, but I'm very...
The original budget did not have the $75,000. This was added in by the Budget Committee, the $75,000.
It had $75,000.
And they wanted to add in.
I'm telling you.
Because the media specialist, the person was not eliminated, but the position was reduced to allow for point six to be used of that person's position...
To be funded by Title I.
To be funded by Title I.
That's where the $75,000 comes in. So, our budget is including that grant. That makes it level-funded. What the Budget Committee is saying is, put the $75,000 back in to fund fully, I believe this is what I'm understanding, is that they want us to fully fund the media specialist. If we write a grant for $75,000, more power to us, but what are we going to, we have to specify.
We're taking the Title I off the table.
If we...
So, this is, I'm sorry, but this is important for you to understand. I think Carol's exactly right. Putting the money back into the 2-2-2-0 function in the budget does not necessarily change what we do.
Right. Exactly.
It just puts money in the budget.
What you do with the money is a whole different thing. That's an administrative decision. That is not our decision. That's micromanaging.
And I think, just big picture, going back again, what the Finance Committee has really been looking at, from my understanding, is, you know, are decreasing, declining enrollment, and trying to keep those increases really reasonable or flat, particularly in light of some building projects that really need to happen in Barnstead.
And I will say, there were other reductions, there are other reductions in the budget, for example, music, but it wasn't eliminate, elimination of a person, because the music was going, and a part of it was going to be shared by the two local districts. You know, the other positions that we had to look at, which were English and physical education, we looked at very carefully. The Assistant Superintendent helped us with all the information about class sizes, and enrollment in those classes, you know, electives. And to be honest with you, originally, I don't think there was a lot of questions asked about the media specialist position, because we weren't losing a person, we were just funding it differently, and satisfying a need that we had for Title I.
No, thank you. It was, it's a lot of information.
All right. Any more clarifying questions before we vote on this motion? Okay. So, the motion is the previous budget level, which I don't have numbers in front of me, but... of me, but all those in favor? Oh, yeah, we should probably read it.
Let's read them.
Got to be quick, Tim. She's going to get to her first.
Eight million, eight hundred, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred, fifty-three dollars.
Correct.
That was the original.
Thank you. She read it. I don't need to. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The motion carries. All right, and then I, don't see an item on here for warrant articles, but do we need warrant articles?
It said, "F24 budget and warrant articles in the same item," sorry. So what I have here reads, "To see if..." "...the districts that comprise SAU 301," and I will check this with Attorney Alton, "to see if the districts that comprise SAU 301 shall vote to adopt the provisions of New Hampshire RSA Chapter 194D and become an open enrollment school district with 0% of the resident student population eligible to seek enrollment outside of SAU 301 schools."
So moved on the warrant article.
I'll second. Can we say pending attorney review if needed?
Sure.
I just wondered, though, because I can hear it already at our group, people are going to want to discuss whether this is for BES, or for Prospect, or for both. Can we just specify that it's for Prospect?
Sure.
We don't want open enrollment BES.
Right. You don't have space.
Not yet.
We'll talk later.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any other warrant articles that we need to look at?
You've already approved them.
Okay. School district treasurer request. So it looks like the treasurer is requesting an increase in salary.
Yeah, you have a letter here from the district treasurer dated December 9th. It's in your packet. Asking to, for your part, we already handled this at an Alton board meeting for Alton's part, but to increase the district treasurer's stipend, she uses the word salary, but it's a stipend, to $2,500.
Can I motion to increase the...
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, policies. We have first reading on EEBA, which is employee-owned vehicles.
Congratulations, you own a vehicle.
We have a...
So now you need a policy. So thank you to Heidi.
Make a motion for first reading of BEB Prospect Mountain High School owned vehicles.
Now, can this be final, too? Because we have the van sitting out in the parking lot.
They want to use it this Saturday.
I just had a comment on number 12, that you probably read all vehicle, all district-owned vehicles will be marked.
Sure.
It says this vehicle, so I don't want to change that later.
All vehicles.
Who'd you bet this to?
Are there samples? There must be samples.
I, I took from multiple school districts and kind of meshed it for us. So it's common language used.
It's approved, we'll use it this weekend. And did, the van doesn't say Prospect Mountain High School yet, but I'm working on getting a graphic wrap donated. The magnet thing's fine for now, but we're going to make it look better.
So there's some other areas where I think that it just needs to be half-parallel language, to Karen's point, number 19.
Yeah.
And so just look for that.
Twenty-one.
It says van keys. It should be vehicle keys, to make it, you know, applicable if we get a second one someday.
Number 23, all refuse. That's a code word that belongs...
Refuse.
That's all trash.
Trash.
If it just said trash.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations.
To you.
Don't crack it up.
Update on JICA dress code? See anything?
No, there's nothing in your packet. We've continued talking, and I know how much the policy committee enjoys having meetings. We might ask you to have a conversation before the next joint board meeting.
Co-curricular eligibility?
Same thing.
J J I C?
Same vote.
New hires.
I have two IT support technicians, both starting today.
Make a motion to accept Jackie Kelly, IT support technician, and Salas Canderson is IT support technician.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are at our second public input. If anybody would like to give input?
Major Sylvester, Joint Budget Committee Chair. There, there was some discussion about if you, with open enrollment, if you had to re-add that position back in, not doing it, but I can speak for myself, knowing what I know now. I would have voted against it, just so you know. So try to clarify some of the questions you may have had about that. There wasn't a discussion whether the employee stayed full-time either. We didn't ever have that conversation, so.
So my question is this, I know you don't, but when I go to the, the meeting in the spring, I assume the joint board might speak to that, because we usually like to try to be hand-in-hand, since it's going to show that we're different from you guys at least. Something might need to be said.
Correct.
So, just so you guys are aware.
Thank you for clarifying.
I'm Kathy Fraser. I'm the employee in question. I would like to thank you all for your consideration. I am disappointed that this is the avenue that you're going to take, because while it may look good on paper, that you're not reducing an employee, what you are doing right now is setting up a person for a difficult situation, especially since I team-teach freshman seminar, and there's a lot of things that I do here that I will not be able to do in, under the current, if this is the way it goes with two positions that I will have. So I thank you, Bill, for your consideration. I do appreciate, this has been a very unusual situation, and I do appreciate the fact that it was considered, even if it was just for a couple of minutes. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else? No? That said, I'll close public input. Future agenda items?
I'm sure policy updates on dress code, co-curricular, probably a last clean copy of the EEBA.
So when are we going to start having strategic planning committee meetings? Because we set those up. I know it's been busy, but...
As soon as possible.
And are we recruiting members from the community for those?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we have to get it done.
So is that a future agenda item?
Anything on generator?
Um, I mean, it should be done before your next meeting, right? That should exist. That committee should be put together before your next meeting. It shouldn't be.
We already made it.
Future. No, no, the whole, the whole committee, your, some of the members. Yeah, we'll have the SRO memorandum of understanding, two policies, more on strategic planning.
I would just offer, even though I know it's well within your capabilities, don't hesitate to maybe look at outsourcing it if you need to. Having just finished that one, it took a year. Other business? Do we need a non-public?
Yep.
Okay. Non-public?
A, B, and C.
Under A, B, and C, who would like to make the motion?
Make a motion to go on a non-public in RSA 901-A3, call two, A, B, and C.
A, B, and C?
That's what he's telling.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
No, yes.
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 Thank you. We're now in non-public.
Hey, two yippers, I like it.
Jay, I don't think you need to stay for this.
Does anyone else need one of these?
Oh, I will.
Oh, yeah, by the door. Way up by the door.